Can you put my video on by any chance? Carrie?
That should do it, Margie.
Okay, we'll try. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, those of you who have come. Are we recording?
Yes.
So the recording will be on the city website. So the people who weren't here today will still have a chance to see this presentation. We shall have faith that more people can see them that way. In order to be clear, this is the presentations of the three finalists chosen by the Public Arts Commission from all of the submissions that were received for a commission for a sculpture which is to be placed at the intersection of the Geroda de Trail and Petaluma Boulevard. So that's right next to the post office annex. There's a kind of triangular space there. And there's a photo of it on the wall out there above the table where the forms are to leave your comments and thoughts for the Public Arts Committee to look at. And I want to be clear that the money for this sculpture, the $25,000 commission, that we pay each of the artists to come and do this presentation, is from the 1% for art fee by ordinance on commercial development in Sedastor. So there's been a pool of money. And this is the third of these type of sculpture commissions that we have done. There's the one on the other side of this wall. There's the one that Ned Khan is still building because of so many years of back and forth with Caltrans and engineers and stuff about where it's going. But that one will be the east entrance to the city. This one we consider the west entrance to the city, the one on the outside. And the sculptures that we are now deciding from, one of them will be the south entrance to the city on the one-way part of Petaluma Boulevard. So each of the three artists will present the concept that we're working on. Then the concepts will remain here in the library for three weeks so that everybody can leave their comments and thoughts about it. But to be clear in the process, the Public Arts Committee will take all those comments into consideration, but the vote of the Public Arts Committee is the decider. And whatever piece is selected by a majority of the Public Arts Committee at our meeting in May will go to the City Council for final approval and then award. And then whatever time it takes for the sculpture to be moved, in the case of one of them that currently exists, or made and installed, in the case of the other two which are in contempt, will now. So Diego Harris is going to present his concept first. And giving everybody about 20 minutes. They can use it however they want, but there will be a period after all three presentations for any other questions and comments and so on because we have the room until 5:30.
And Robert, sorry, if I may, sorry, hello, Carrie Fons from Planning.
Just make sure that we recognized the regional parks folks. This is a collaboration with the Geroda de Trailhead is actually regional park land. And I think I saw at least, I think I saw Bert Whitaker. Bert, are you in the room?
I'm here.
And then I don't know if there are any board members you'd like to introduce.
I also wanted to mention that there are survey forms outside that will be here for the three weeks so that the public can have a chance to voice their opinion as well.
And so you are welcome to comment, but your written survey form will be the permanent form that we just look at rather than remember what you said today.
Introduce the other park members.
The five members of the Public Art Committee, I am the chair, Barbara Harris, Lars Langberg, Marty who is there, and Jeff who is at a family event, Jeff Sucker who is in the studio.
Well, hello, everybody. I'm Diego Harris. I am a sculpture artist who lives in Upper Lake, Lake County. So about a couple hours' drive from here, not too far. Anyhow, I've got a little slideshow here. And I was just kind of planning on making you guys sculpture, one large tree style sculpture. But then everybody was saying, well, we'd also kind of like to have a bench. So I decided, well, I'll make the sculpture just a little bit smaller and I will also make a bench. So my presentation is you actually get two sculptures for the price of one, basically. And the concept drawing, which is actually this guy right here, is also the maquette which will be on display here for three weeks. So it'll be about 15 feet tall, about 10 feet wide. And it will have maybe, I'm not sure on this yet, but probably three segments. And they'll bolt together just so I can move this thing because it's going to be huge. And could you do the next slide, please? I think you just clicked the, oh, anyway, you can see that photo here, too. But yeah, it'll be about 15 feet tall. It'll be three dimensional. But it'll be sort of oriented mostly sort of like side on view from the road. So as you walk around, there'll be kind of different little aspects to it and different shapes that kind of take form. And also the neat thing about my sculptures are when you see it at a certain angle from the sun, you get like a neat shadow that gets cast, too. And I actually installed one just today in Cloverdale. And everybody commented, they're like, oh, wow, you get like a neat sundial effect with the shadow. And I have a very similar sculpture that I made last year just to show you what it would look approximately like finished. And that would be the next slide, please, if you can.
Where's that one?
This one is actually at a private residence in Litford, so near where I live. There's also a similar one that I have a photo of out there. I think I got that photo before I had finished this one or something. So that's another similar sculpture out there on the table. But I'm also going to have these here for people to look at, hopefully. And there is also a binder of different sculptures and things that I've done, as well as the concept drawing for this project. If anybody wants to pass it around, feel free. And there's some construction photos in there of me working and stuff. But yeah, that's one that's about 10 feet tall. So that's maybe a two-thirds size. It's still a pretty big sculpture. You know, it's nothing that somebody knows that. But you know, I figured for a public viewing sculpture where you're going to be primarily seeing it from the road, I really wanted it to just make an impact. So it's going to be about 15 feet tall, which if you can see from my fiance's little diorama that she made me here, that's about a human height. And that would be the sculpture. So it's going to be like, oh, wow, you know. A little taller than the ceiling in here, actually.
Considerably.
Yeah. I mean, 15, this is probably like 12 feet or 13 maybe. Yeah, it'll be pretty big, about 10 feet wide. It'll be, like I said, mostly kind of flatways viewing. But from the side, it will also have some kind of undulating kind of designs that take shape as you walk around it. It's not just going to be like a flat plane, you know. And like I said, could you do the next slide, please? There are a couple more shots in here, actually, different angles of it. And then after that, you're also going to get a bench. And I have a little maquette version here. And I also have, well, I don't know if I can really take it up. So I have the concept drawing on the top here. That'll be the concept design, about six feet tall, about seven feet wide. The actual sitting area outside is about five feet. It'll be fairly comfy. I mean, I know it looks like, oh, wow, that's weird. But I've made several of these. And there's a few that are in public. And people always say, it's surprisingly comfy. Like, I feel like I could sit here for a while, you know. But they're sturdy. They're like built out of scrap metal. Thank you. Different kinds of interesting parts that I find. A lot of it will be similar to the sculpture where it's made with a Corten steel. Should have mentioned that earlier. Yeah, it'll be made with Corten steel, which lasts longer than regular mild steel. It gets kind of a nice fine velvety rust patina on it. But I'll probably also have like interesting different pieces of scrap metal, maybe different colors, probably some gray and some silvery looking pieces there. It'll be kind of similar to this one, which I actually made for the city of Eureka. They let me go into their railroad museum, chop up some of their old railroad parts with a torch. So that was fun. Walked out of there with a bunch of old, big giant steam engine chunks and different parts. I'm like, are you serious? Like, it's a museum. They're like, we're never going to be using that. But it's just rotting. Just go. Oh, that's fun. Here's a big giant torch. I'm like, you're so lucky I know how to use this thing. This would be like bad if I didn't know what I was doing. But yeah, kind of like that, only a little bit more sculptural. Like this is another one I did for Eureka. I think it's going to be closer to this one. But that one has some other elements on the side that I'm going to do, sort of these interesting undulating pieces. A little bit more sculptural there. And next slide, please. And that's the side on view. So yeah, it's kind of got different angles, different interesting things going on. It's not just going to be like a flat thing that you look at and that's it. It'll kind of have different angles that are curious to look at and more going on to look at there. This one, I actually used also two big giant boilers that actually came out of my parents' crawl space. The whole time they had their house for like 20 something years, there'd be big boilers that made it hard to get into the crawl space that has just been abandoned down there. I go up to my dad and I'm like, I think I want those boilers. He's like, you can get them out of there. That'd be great because they're a pain having them there. So broke them out, cut them up in pieces, made armrests. So that's kind of what I'm talking about. And this one was actually railroad themed, like I said. So I put a little piece of railroad track right in the middle of the bench there. They're like, make it railroad-y, you know. I'm like, okay, that's what you want. Say, next slide, please. And yeah, and then I also wanted to just talk about sort of the basic design and structure. It's going to be made out of Corten steel. There's also like an internal structure of steel rebar. There's going to be square tubing used. It'll be very strong. They'll also be safe. I do all the welds on seam welding. All the edges are seam welded. After they're done with the welding, I go back and I sand them down, do one rough sanding, and then I polish them down with like a 100 grit flat disc. They're nice and smooth, so no kids are going to get cut or get tetanus or anything climbing on these things. You know, I mean, obviously, you can't engineer kind of stupid out of the equation. Somebody could climb to the very top and fall off. But hey, you know, that's the same with anything in the world, so. But they're about as safe as they possibly could be. Next slide, please. And let's see, yeah, so we got over the whole, it's a big sculpture thing. I talked about the Corten. Here's installing one of them. This is a similar sized sculpture, the one I'm talking about. The design is not the same as the other one I was showing, but this is about the size I'm talking about. So you can see, it kind of comes apart in these segments. Like about halfway up, you can see kind of a little notch in the design there. And that's where there's two big flanges that I cut. And then they get bolted together on site. This guy just happened to own a big tree training service, but he's like, oh, I got a crane if you need it. I'm like, well, that's nice because otherwise I'm going to have to set up scaffolding and stuff. He's like, yeah, I'll just put it on the ground and then I'll just lift it up and put it in there. So that was really handy. I don't know if there's going to be a crane involved with this one, but I'll figure it out. But yeah, he had this whole little platform built out of Corten steel. He filled it in with gravel and concrete. And it looks really great. Next slide, please. And yeah, so that's a similar sized one. It hasn't had a chance to rust there. That's like a fresh Corten steel, kind of like gray. But the overall look will eventually be kind of a rusty reddish patina. And that's another installation one. Next slide, please. And I think the next one is one that you can actually see the patina when it's really formed well. Having a little trouble today with the thing isn't really working that good, sorry. Oh, that's another one of those ones. Yeah, you can see the flanges are a little better on that one. So yeah, I kind of got into doing the trees after all these big fires around here. And a lot of people have been cutting their trees down all around their properties. Like they didn't want anything within 100 feet of their house. And then I started making these big metal trees, like, you can have this near your house. You'll never have to worry about it burning your house down. And boy, they caught on quick. I got all these orders for people wanting trees in the yard, big metal trees. It's kind of died down a little with the trees lately just because we've had a good few rains now. But I'm still telling people like, well, you still aren't going to find any trees right there because you know we're going to have another drought eventually. So yeah, they're pretty popular. And next slide, please. Anyhow, you know, like I said, they're fireproofed. They're very strong. I've had them in earthquakes. They've been in floods, hurricanes.
How do you attach it to the ground?
Well, different methods I can use. Those ones were bolted down to concrete footings. You can have a concrete path. This one is a little bit different design, but that's another kind of similar one. Same size, basically, about 14 and a half feet on that one. And you can see this one, because it's right near the ocean, that one's actually in Carmel by the sea, the sea. And it has gotten a really nice ocean red rust patina on it. Around here, that would probably take about two years to get that kind of a red going. But on the coast, I think it was like six months. And next slide, please. The arrows might do it, too. Not working the day. All right. Well, that's another similar one I did in Lake County, smaller one. But you can see the patina there. It's like a three-year patina. So they kind of just slowly develop more and more of an interesting patina on them. And eventually they get kind of this almost kind of stone looking quality to them. So they kind of go from being sort of like a dark color to sort of a splotchy red. And they get like a really red. And then eventually they almost start to look like stone. And I thought this was really neat just because of the way it kind of blends in with the rock wall in the background there. But somehow they kind of take form of their environment, you know. Next slide, please. So yeah, it'll kind of blend in in a weird sort of way. Like if you're not looking for it, you might not even see it. So it doesn't like just jump out and go, ah, there's art here, you know. It's just kind of subtle, but when you do see it, you're like, oh, wow, that's cool, you know. And like some artists are like, oh, you could have these like powder coated some bright color or something. And I'm like, well, that's cool. But I just really like that red rust color, you know. There's another one on the coast there that I did, just a one big spiral. And one of the spirals on this sculpture is going to be about that size, a little bit smaller than that. But there'll just sort of be a nice smattering of spirals with it. I don't know if you've noticed by now, but I really like spirals. For like 20 years, I did jewelry and that was kind of my theme was just doing spirals over and over again. So now I just make really big earrings into sculptures, you know, that's sort of my theme. Next slide, please.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Do you count that, or does anybody try to climb on it? And what happens if someone climbs on it?
Well, people can climb on it if they really wanted to. This particular sculpture, the first thing you're going to have to grab onto would be maybe there. And it's going to be about this high off the ground. So small children, I don't see them being able to unless somebody gave them a boost. A teenager or something probably could, but.
Well, what would happen if somebody did climb on it?
Well, nothing would really happen to the sculpture. And if the person was careful and didn't fall off or anything, they'd be fine. Now, if they climbed way up and fell on the ground, they might hurt themselves that way. But I mean, that's the same with just about everything, you know.
It's like they would get rust on their clothes.
I can coat them with like a varnish, but I tend to leave them just natural. But yeah, it's a, you know, and they get patina, they don't really rub that much rust off. It's just like the tiniest, like I installed one today and these are the same pants. It's not that much. Like the Corten is not like a regular steel where it's just constantly like leaching rust everywhere. It's like a very fine, not very thick kind of dusting, basically. This is one I'm working on actually still, but you can see how I structured it inside. Now, this is going to be a big sculpture, so it's kind of like what I'm talking about here. It's all going to be. It's all gonna be done with thick square tubing, and there's gonna be rebar. Until it gets out to like fairly smaller parts, like up in here, and then it'll just be the rebar. And, uh, next slide please. If I just skip through like a couple fairly quickly, 'cause they're mostly just construction photos. And this one's actually gonna be a big dragon sculpture, which I'm making for the city of Clear Lake. They're, they're working on their legend of the Clear Lake Monster, sort of our version of the Loch Ness Monster. So they wanted a sculpture to kinda fit that theme. And this was basically, uh, my Loch Ness Clear Lake Lake Monster. But, um, it's in the book too, if it's still floating around. But there'll also be, um, you know, you can always go on my website too, if you're curious, I have more photos there. Um, anybody else have any questions for me now?
What gauge do you use for that?
Uh, different gauges. Typical, just body panels and stuff, is sixteen gauge. If it has to be a little more structural, I'll use fourteen gauge. Like if it's a sculpture like of legs, I make the legs look like fourteen gauge. Um, the bottom flange and actual flanges where they go together is, um, eight gauge. So a three-sixteenths inch thick. I don't really use super thick stuff, just for one thing, Corten is kinda strong on its own. Like something that's sixteen gauge in Corten would be more like fourteen gauge in mild steel, just for the strength factor. Um, and if you know how to work with it, it's fairly easy to bend still.
No, this is sixteen.
Yeah. And if you do it fourteen gauge, you can still bend it, but it's a little tougher. And then you get up to like twelve and ten gauge, it's really hard to bend.
Yeah.
I've done that, but, oh man, it's tough. So here you can see one of the flanges that I'm working on it. So I actually have like two plates that I cut holes in. And then I load them together while I'm working on it, and then afterwards they come apart, and then they just bolt back together. Uh, next slide please.
Trying here.
Let me know if I hold over my time or anything.
You've got, uh...
Any more questions? Anybody have?
Thanks for bearing with us, technical difficulties, my gosh.
There's like a little sweet spot somewhere in the room where it would, and I don't know why. Hard to find it. But yeah, this is just me working in the workshop. I have one piece down there that I cut out, and then I take the panels. Blow them on. Excuse me. I cut them out, basically, I make like a paper template first. I lay just like packing paper on top of it, and then I rub chalk over it, kinda to feel where they are. And then I cut them out, I take them over to my cutting area, I trace them out onto the steel, and then I cut them with a torch. And then I sand all the edges smooth, 'cause if you get like a little bit of that cutting slag in the weld, you get like little bubbles and deviations and things. So I gotta make sure it's all nice and clean. Sometimes I take a wire wheel and I buff it before I roll over it. Uh, next slide please. You know, it's tough, so I... I did have to bring a PowerPoint for this, you know? Could've just printed all these out.
We may be a little deep in the technical means.
Well, I should've just made like a hundred of these. But that would've knocked me like a lot.
Is there anything in the rest of the PowerPoint that, uh...
I mean, it's modern construction, and then I've got the semi-finished sculpture setup. But it's not like entirely, uh, you know, you can stop now if it has to.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks everybody.
Um, we should take some things off the table, so that Michael has a boot to put his stuff.
Yep.
They'll take the other one?
I just wanna, we...
The table or wheels, we can move it where you want.
Take a bunch of chairs here and put the boards up.
Here, huh?
And then I can...
Well, okay. All right. Sorry about the late. So, Michael Lindell, um, came...
Not the little guy.
Not the little guy. Came up, uh, from LA, with his family who are here with us. Yes? Good old fashioned boards.
Okay. I'll stand over here, but I still wanna get... I'm gonna pass this on. People can kinda look at every angle they want. I'll start with my children. So I'm Michael Terry, Eric Lindell. I'm coming here all the way from Los Angeles, where I work as an architect and a designer. And, you know, uh, sculpture, hopefully. Uh, I've been working in art for a long time, I just haven't, uh, been more of a hobby. But I started out in sculpture, um, right after high school, went to the Art Institute of Chicago. Tried to make it as an artist there for seven years, and I ended up working in a sculpture studio. Doing all kinds of crazy large-scale sculptures for other people, and fabricating them, and selling them, and doing architectural work. Um, I decided I wanted a real income, so I'm an architect, 'cause I wanted a family. It's hard to do that, uh, um, but I've, you know, I've always come back to making things. I've been doing it, uh, nonstop, mostly furniture and art and sculpture and stuff. But I come up here about once a year in this area, for some relatives and, uh, and Raphael. I just love it. Um, and so when I heard about this, I was excited to enter a piece. And my inspiration really, like recalling my memories from driving around here, was really the rolling hillsides. Um, it is something that, and something I've always been interested in, is kind of how man and, you know, collaboration with nature. And I, you know, you can kind of see it in this image here, the grapevines and just the way they're cultivated. I mean, you look at it here like, I love nature, but like that's man's imprint on nature. And so, you know, I, I came up with, and this is kind of the original sketch here I did. I'll pass this around too, and if you can't kinda see each piece here, it's kind of like, you know, a vision of a rolling hillside. And then I kind of just stacked them up and almost carried it a speed drive. It's a title their role play, because it, it plays the role of nation, it plays the role of man in one piece. And, um, it's something I've always been kind of fascinated. Even starting in Chicago, I used to love watching, uh, smokestacks coming out of all the buildings. And with the time, they create these beautiful kind of vertical clouds, so to speak. And I was like, you know, these only exist when man puts them. There's another, like, you know, the terrace hillside of, you know, where cultivating and farmers and stuff. So I've kind of been interested in that, but like my, you know, just driving here and just seeing the rolling hills, I've never seen anything really like it. Um, so that was the big, that's kind of my inspiration board. It's also showing a little bit of the scale. Um, and this is a about two foot tall version of something that would end up being eight feet tall. All made, this is a, it would be a quarter inch steel, Corten steel, say. And, uh, Diego did such a good job of describing Corten, I don't have to reiterate that. A lot of kind of molecular structure on the surface. Yeah, I, I mean, he's correct. It doesn't, it's, the surface is, is tighter grain, so the rust can't get to it too much. And, um, I think he did a great job describing that. Um, this is a, a rush patina, this is using chemicals on mild steel and a clear coat. But it does kind of show, you know, a darker state of the Corten than, uh, you know, like you showed, it does go through these stages. I don't know if you use, uh, cold rolls or not.
I just say the one they have.
Yeah.
If they take those sticks, whatever matters.
But it would, I would probably start it off with a starter patina kit, um, which there's various chemicals and formulas you can do. Um, just to, I don't, I don't know how, you know, I, I want it to go pretty evenly and, and pretty quickly. But it takes, you know, about two years to probably get to that very... I think this is representative. But, you know, as you said, it's, it's alive. It's a material that's really alive. It's changing, you know, from one stage into the other. It's, it's, you know, uh, it's not gonna go anywhere in our life, in our kids' lifetime. Still there if you wanted to. Uh, it's, you know, virtually indestructible. You know, if you have any questions about the safety issues, we're gonna be the same response as Dago. Somebody climbs to the top and falls off, we have insurance. Um, you know, none of the edges will be sharp enough for anybody to get cut. The base on here is wide enough, so it acts as a cane rail. So if anybody's, you know, flying with a cane, will knock off their head into it. Um, and actually, I'm proposing doing a steel base for it. So one thing that Corten does, um, it does, after rain, will kind of stain whatever's sitting on.
Yeah.
And this will be a stainless steel sheet. Um, so the stain will be easily cleaned up, it won't affect the concrete or even penetrate into the concrete. It actually kind of will work with it better, and so you won't, you know, even get, you know, I'm hoping it's not even stained from coming down the side. To keep that a nice concrete base. Um, there's really not a lot of welding going into it, it's more gonna be assembled piece by piece. Kind of an interior collar that all kind of, uh, will hold on to a master, um, bolt in a way. Um, but, I mean, that's maybe the mockhead, as a little proof of concept for you guys. Um, this here is just kind of a, you know, the wall factor view, showing, you know, the different kind of light conditions that are gonna hit it. But I wanted to point out, um, not propose a, a fancy design, but what I, you know, I wanted to show my ideal kind of landscape. It was, you know, uh, surrounded by BGE, they could be accessed all the way around with a wheelchair. Went out to the site earlier and, you know, hopefully we can create bits, maybe level the sidewalk for ADA access. Um, I know there's another trail that'll be right here, you know, I've never, you know, I don't use it. And it's like, um, they need both trails, I would probably leave it out to this or how many in the city wants to turn that to ADA. Um, but that's how we are. Um, but I would propose a kind of manicure in the one pathway that's, uh... You can see in the aerial here, this kind of diagonal, really getting this manicured. And what I would, you know, like to do is, you know, reposition the bench there, so it gives a little bit more of the shade from the trees. And creates more of an internal portrait space than having it outside feeling like a bus stop that isn't being used. Um, you know, I think a simple, uh, elegant concrete base is what I would propose, something that kind of matches the base. Um, I know it's not in budget, so I'm presenting something I think as a wish list or like, you know, something that could be staged and further developments. And, you know, just a nice planted, uh, native kind of garden around there, and almost already exists. Um, but, you know, using the existing trees in the site, I think this could be the place that people can go and spend time, eat up for coffee. It's kind of a, a waste of space right now, so it's, you know, envisioning the sculpture there, but just also kind of, you know, a space for it. Nice and shaded and everything like that. So I think I mentioned, overall, it'll be with the base about nine feet tall, the sculpture itself. I kept, uh, to eight feet, 'cause it's, you know, part of the sheet. And since I'm pretty much building it myself, each panel, the max panel is a hundred pounds, so I can maneuver it myself and everything. I don't have team of people yet helping out this. Um, but it's very, you know, coming, working as an architect, you learn how to design things that'll be put together and assembled. Um, and, uh, but, you know, if it, any kind of welding and stuff, I, I have plenty of experience doing all the fabrications for this, so...
Just a quick question. Do you or does Diego know about any prospects for lighting?
That was, um, there's, in the brief, there was, uh, said there's no electrical available. In the future, if there was, I think, you know, uh, it wouldn't be that difficult to do some uplighting on it.
Solar, but, um, there is no electrical there or turn up to there that...
I could, I could buy a couple little solar lights to bring them. I mean, I don't know how long they'd last, but...
Well, that's the problem with solar lights, nobody makes one that really lasts.
I mean, there's a, there's a park where they have sculptures in Geyserville, but the guy or places are pretty regular. I mean, they do get stolen occasionally, but...
It becomes a maintenance item that I don't think the city wants to bother.
Or bring your own light. Yeah, no, I would love to incorporate lighting, but it just wasn't...
Is there a street light? I, I don't think so.
There's a crosswalk there.
Yeah, there is a crosswalk a little ways away, but I don't think it would light the sculpture.
I have another question. Are you asking this for safety reasons or just for...
We're talking about lighting sculpture at night, so...
Okay, no, I, I just...
Um, when you, if you're looking from the front, what if you make it so when you're looking from the front, you're able to like turn the sculpture so you could see?
Oh, so if you don't wanna walk around it, and you put it on the record player. Yeah, that would be nice. Yeah. Good idea. Next one.
So I'm, I'm just curious, does anyone do any light studies in terms of the orientation of the sun a little bit of the time around it, and how that...
These, yeah, just so you know, these renderings were in the correct orientation with the correct state of lighting.
Okay.
So, you know, um, actually... So you're, this is kind of a, you know, during the, end of the day, during more dusk, pouring dust, you're gonna get, you get the really nice light there.
The center one looks like summer afternoon.
Yeah. I think there is, uh, some good lighting available.
It's hard to shift things, just, it's like...
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's hard, you know, uh, to do sun studies for every single month and stuff like that, um...
I'm curious, and then, and then, and then, and then, and then, and then, to the question about lighting, during the day, there's probably some changing light.
Yeah.
It'll affect the evening, there'll be people, too many people will hang out there, that's the inside anyway, you know?
But it's, it's, it'll be a well-lit area, so you won't get, like, it's not in the dark, it's not a North Bay thing behind the building.
Yeah.
It's, uh, you know, it's, uh, it's, it's a really nice light space for lighting or sculpture. You know, some, and then that, that's what's nice about it, I think, during the day, really figures start to evolve, depending on where the light comes from, where you are.
I would thought there might be some tree trimming that happens when this starts, so that, that would be helpful for an actor.
And, and that's necessary.
Yeah.
There's one overhanging tree that, that can be pruned. Most of the overhang is one branch of that tree.
Yeah. I mean, I know there is a tree, I didn't have a survey, you know, exactly where... I mean, I know there is a tree. I didn't have a survey, you know exactly where it was, but I was walking the site today, this is probably pretty close to what is going to be there, but there's some big hanging tree.
There's some ranks right there that are.
Yeah, no, it was coming down, like, it was basically marking the spot where I wanted to sculpt it with a tree branch. So, yeah, just, you know, some lovely clearing and trimming there, I think. I mean, the whole space needs a good clearing, which is quite a mess.
But now that a sculpture there will just give people more initiative to make it better.
Yeah, like, I think once you get started in that spot, you know, it'll keep going. No, it's a great place with a sculpture.
Really?
I mean, you wouldn't think it. Like, driving by, I think, oh, that's a space, but once you really think about it. Yeah.
And there's a lot of foot traffic.
Yeah, no, I mean, just walking there, seeing people get on it. But it seems like what this would introduce is a meeting place, a place to meet at the trail. And you can actually sit down and have a conversation somewhere. There's no place on the street.
It needs something.
I mean, it looks like an abandoned bus stop.
It's almost confusing right now, because it's like, is this part of the trail? Or is this part of somebody's yard? If there was a sculpture there, you'd be like, oh, we should hang out here, this is nice.
Yeah. I mean, it's definitely sunny and bright, too. That's why, like, use the trees for some shading, reposition that bench. Oh, okay, I'm, you know, I can talk about core ten some more.
I don't have to use them all.
I think I've said it, you know, for me, this is really my, I was really inspired by the Sonoma area, I think, for this creation. I don't have a lot of work that's done with this. So, you know, to me, it's very, it speaks of what I feel every time I come up here. You know, and kind of the way, you know, these kind of rotate, you, like, the way you see the hills kind of fade out on the hillside, you know, I think, you know, I was really happy with that. So, you know. I don't know if you have any more, but if anybody has any questions.
Those two panels in the middle are what it would look like at the site?
That's what I admitted, yes. I know the landscape wasn't part of the brief, but, you know, I think, hopefully, my hope would be whoever owns this and gets this sculpture, that somebody will take that effort to make that happen. This way or the way Diego had it. This is a great, you know, just a sculpture by itself, I don't know if it's enough. Enough to get things started. But hopefully that will be. Thank you.
The next presentation is sponsored by.
Okay, I'll leave the shift.
By Bruce Johnson. His daughter, Tori, intended her here representing his. The sculpture actually currently hits. Would you like to share it out of the lobby now?
Sure, that's great. I think Kendra's going to get that, the slideshow.
How good is that?
Loaded up as well.
Yeah, so, I mean, this is probably, I know it's more drawn in, because if you want to, it's not limited. The other trail here. And it seems like, well, it's probably used, but.
Yeah, they're, they're both used.
Quite a bit. You know, the trees, all the, you get a little bit more of that shade.
Put it on the side, maybe, okay.
Can the screen get turned off?
No, because of the, other, the zoom is gone.
Where?
It's, yeah.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can just stand, I don't get blinded by the. Or, or corner. And was that going to be quite enjoyable to go up, Kendra?
We're really lucky to be here right now.
Okay. We have to, okay. Well, we'll get started. Good afternoon. I'm here along with my sister, Kendra Johnson. My name is Tori Johnson. And we're proposing to install this piece called Cohen, which is a piece that was built by my dad. He died last year in studio. He actually died while working in the studio, which is really this thing that he loved to do most. He was, he lived and worked in Sonoma County for about fifty years. And pretty much on any given day, you would find him in his studio, working with chainsaws, cranes, hand tools, copper. He was, he really was a fixture of the art community in Sonoma County. And he was, sculpture was his passion. His family, too, was his passion, but sculpture was just, it brought so much joy to him. He was, and, and his primary motivation, he worked primarily with redwood, mostly salvaged redwood. A lot of this material came from sort of the remnants of the logging industry. Often they would cut a redwood tree, you know, about ten feet tall from the ground to get the nice tree trunks. And then those stumps were left in the ground. You know, fifty years later, after a lot of the logging industry had sort of fallen away, they started to pull those stumps out of the ground. And so as he was beginning his career, there was this huge amount of salvaged redwood burls that he began to collect and began to form, really inspired by sort of the organic forms of these old root burls. The, this, this series, Cohen is one of the series, I think of it as being a series of three pieces. A lot of these came from one shipment of redwood that he got up from, I think, the Fortuna area. But this, I think of this as being a real quintessential series of his. The, it's exceptional redwood material, that really, it's a material that is disappearing, honestly. And he, and, and one of the reasons that this piece came to mind for us as being really appropriate for the city of Sebastopol is that, you know, redwood, it is the material of this place. I mean, this is where redwood is from. It has incredible durability for wood in an outdoor venue. Redwood, especially old growth redwood, actually is a very durable material and also patina with time. Likewise, he used a lot of copper detailing. So these, you know, on the ends of the trunks here, this copper boulder, he did a lot of work with copper to both, you know, protect and grain often, or if there was any sort of lumish in the wood, often he brought copper in to form into those spaces or to sort of create these organic forms of stones and boulders. You know, we think of redwood as really carrying sort of history in its fiber. Its strength is really built from soaking up, you know, the winter rains, the summer fog. You know, the strength is built from it being blown around in the wind. So I think it was, it was that sort of time and organic feel that really inspired his work and that he tried to bring out of the pieces of wood that he worked with. This series, I think they evoke sort of the sense of sea cats of the Pacific coast. That was something that, you know, you think about the old, you know, yeah, boat rocks, the rocks, boat rocks or the log jams washed up on the beach. Those were places that he loved and that he really drew from when creating his work. And, you know, to me, I also see a traveler in this piece. I sort of think of it as a traveler kind of standing on their, you know, on their staff and taking a moment to just take a look around and take a rest. My dad wrote the piece, he said, Cohen is a paradox to be meditated upon, abandoned reason by fine sudden intuitive insight. Those are his words. The piece, it's both larger than life, but also very human scale. It's, it really welcomes someone to come up and to sit around it, to touch it. My dad, one of his favorite phrases was please touch. That was his, that's how he wanted his sculptures. He wanted, he wanted people to sign on his sculptures. He wanted people to come and run their hands across the wood into these natural forms. This piece is a pro, it's actually, we're pretty similar scales here. The actual piece is about seven feet tall with the steel base. And then this concrete base gives it about another two feet of height. This concrete plant, one of the real benefits of it is that both, it's a nice edge that you can sit on as well as it allows you to weed whack, to mow all around it without damaging the sculpture. So it has a real, as well as kind of raising it to be sort of in that nice view line as you're coming down one sixteen, it sort of really puts it into views of both cars as well as pedestrians coming through on the Dover Doda Trail. And, yeah, and it really is, it's, it's the durability, it's gratefulness, it's maker's story and sort of ecological story that made it feel like a really appropriate piece for the city of Sebastopol. He is, his work is, you'll find throughout the county, throughout the US, he has some pieces placed internationally. But really, he was, he was a real believer in the art, a real supporter of the art community. I mean, if he was here, he'd be like, this is great, let's support these guys. I mean, he really, he really just believed in art. One of the things that we're trying to do as we sort of move through this process of selling his work is we are trying to pull that back into developing sort of an artist residency program in his studio so that, you know, we can make that, that space available to artists. It's, you know, it's a pretty incredible space that he has for large-scale artworks. Okay, I've lost my train of thought, but we're going to go through. You want to just, you might flip things through to just a few of the other pieces here. Yeah, right here. So this is actually a piece called Outverse. So I consider this as one of the same series. This piece was destroyed in the Tusk Fire. It was at the Silver Bank Center when the Tusk Fire blew through. So this piece, as well as the next one, actually, if you go down to the next piece, Rock Slide, this is actually other private collection in Santa Rosa. So I really think of this as being kind of the last of his trio, which are his real favorites of mine. So you can see, you know, these were displayed in Tiburon, along the waterfront. The next one. Excuse me, are all, are all three the same size? This is probably the smallest of the three. They're all about, Outverse is the largest, I mean, this and Rock Slide are about the same height. This one's a little more compact, yeah. Boy, this one was also, came from the same lot of materials. And you can see, you know, they, it's, this particular setting is beautiful for being in an urban space to have the backdrop of the oak trees, you know, of just the meadow. It feels like a really appropriate setting for a piece like this. Kind of keep going. Hallie, this is currently at the Silver Bank Center. Uprising is in Windsor. You know, also, so again, these are all outdoor pieces, uprising. So, you know, it would be a real honor for us to see one of my dad's sculptures here in Sebastopol. It would be, I think he would be thrilled just to know that it was received by this community and to know that, maybe, the sharing and the joy that he brought from these. And aren't there a couple pieces of the Green Music Center also? Yeah, there's pieces of the Green Music Center. There's, yeah, there, I mean, we keep discovering pieces.
There's, there's one in Windsor in their new roundabout.
Yeah, yeah, near the Oliver's Market there.
So are there maintenance considerations?
Sure, I mean, this, we will, you know, upon delivery, we would, we would do a refinishing. So these ones have been refinished probably twice in their life span. So every five years, ideally, it could be refinished, basically re-oiled. And not just, it's mostly for presentation. I don't think it's really, the, the wood itself is pretty strong. It just, it makes them sort of pop and look good. But, so that would be the desired maintenance.
And the weight of the concrete base is sufficient just setting it down if it doesn't need a foundation in addition?
Correct, yep. So the, the concrete base, basically, so the, the piece is connected to the steel base, which then sits on the concrete base, and they're, yeah, they're both just extremely heavy. And we have, you know, we've assembled a really wonderful team of people who have been helping us move sculptures. It's actually been a really fun process to find people with a trailer. And we have a boom truck that my dad has, that we've had people help us get operational. And so we have a local contractor just because they carry insurance and all of that, who has agreed to help us with the installation. Oh, sure, yes.
Or is that what you guys are running?
These are, I wanted to say that these are just so that you can have something to feel with your hands, again, to honor, please touch.
Oh, but it's not, it's not the. No, yeah. Yeah, it's, they're just similar, it's that, the sense of, the sense of feel.
But I think Tori explained, and I'm sorry to pop, pop in, but to answer that, this piece is, is complete. It's maybe fifteen years old, how, when did it?
Yeah.
And so there is no, he didn't do models for very much of the sculpture. For buildings, he would do usually a scale model and some sketches, pretty basic ones. But for sculpture, it happened in real time, in real space, there is no market. These are just to give you an idea of this, this old burly redwood and how nice it feels to touch. There's nothing like the piece that would be there.
Could you please review the title again?
Cohen? That's a very good question.
Cohen is a, Cohen is a Japanese kind of a riddle. Does anybody know what a Cohen is?
Why does the dog bark?
One of these sort of unsolvable mysteries of life is a Cohen. And I think that's what this felt like, was here it is. And, and he, what did he say, sudden intuitive insight, and a little question, too. And Tori has also observed that to her, it has a feeling of a bit of a traveler. The way maybe with that staff coming through, that it sort of feels like, like there's, it's got, it's a, that it came from somewhere and it's heading somewhere in some kind of way. And also, I don't know if you mentioned that Bruce loves to ride bikes, but he loved cycling. He cycled all over the world and did a solo cross-country, that's when he turned sixty. And I think that having a piece on this bike trail to come across when you're cycling up to the city. Any questions?
I really love this picture of it coming right out of the ground it's sitting on. And I found myself loving the. I really love this picture of it coming right out of the ground it's sitting on, and I found myself loving the piece but being distracted by the concrete base, maybe because the color of the concrete or the orchestration made it look like Galvez. And I was wondering if there's any way to make it feel like it does, like it's act, like, not, it loses the connection to the earth to me, and if there's any way to take around that, if that's a concern to anybody else.
Yeah, I, well, I mean, I think, so I think the, the steel, um, is important, you don't want to have that moisture at, you know, it's sitting on wet ground. Um, the concrete, what, I think the advantage, um, and I sort of appreciate that, um, that comment, and it, it wasn't actually originally designed with a concrete base, it's, the, the piece is actually sitting at my house right now, so I'm reluctantly, um, I'm not sure whether I'm ready to give it up, but, but we ended up setting it on this concrete base, and the reason is that it's set in a big field, and it's proven to be really wonderful because the grass can grow up around it without losing the piece of, it sort of floats above the grass. And from what I understand, the site probably will, will stay as a somewhat natural site. I think worse to go on a, sort of a, a DD base or something like that, which would be wonderful. I think there would be reasons to think about maybe taking it off the concrete, um, but that.
Well, there's, if, uh, if that were a choice, there are wonderful stains for concrete, which give a patina that looks very natural, and that could be done to it.
And just so you know, Kendra has a smart, quick, I imagine, one of her good pieces, and the kids climb up on it and they, my sister died, sorry, we're starting to reading on it. So it seems incredible, different kinds of different pieces, but it's just beautiful to watch, like Beijing, it's really cool.
Are there any questions, uh, for Tori and Kendra, or for either of the other artists that have, uh, come to mind after you didn't have the chance to ask? Any other thoughts, comments?
I forget to fill out a survey.
Can we fill out the问卷s later, or?
Of course. Yes, the display materials for each sculpture will be here in the library and the table outside with surveys. And so please encourage everybody you know to come by and look at them and give us their thoughts, because that's what Public Art Committee is about.
Do you have the same, that's sort of different size?
Yeah, yeah, the different angles, yeah, but it does, there's a hanging boulder, maybe there, uh-huh, yeah. And I wanted to invite everybody to the opening, or actually closing of this show of Todd Smith and my staff, because these five are just sitting in a nice gallery environment, thanks for the library.
Thank you. Please use the art committee for how, for bringing art to Sebastopol, it's really, um, really important that we share art. Tomorrow, I think, is the International Sculpture Day in New York, and at the Sonoma County Museum, there will be a demonstration, sculpture demonstration, um, in the early afternoon, for those of you that are around who have, uh, so.
So, also, uh, so these, this, the recording of this will be on the city web site, under the page for the Public Art Committee. So, um, anybody you talked to about being here says, gee, I'm sorry, I missed that, can go to the city website and find the recording.
Well, the city website has, it's not, because, um, I think that those two small pieces in the corner are very important, they show a completely different view.
Well, if you send them to Zuzi, and you've had email from her about this, um, Zuzi is the webmaster, so I feel they can be put up.
Great idea.
Good idea. She is.
Who ultimately decides which of the three sculptures?
The Public Art Committee of five makes that decision, and then the, um, uh, the city council has to have the final vote. They, they could reject the choice that the Public Art Committee makes, because they're lucky, but, um, I don't believe that has to happen. Thank you for coming and representing the county, do you feel happy from the county standpoint about any of these?
I just very appreciative of the process, and having you to public, that's just fantastic, thank you to our, um, people who have been here and here to sort us and provide the work.
Thanks all three of you very much.
I do have a question, would it be beneficial, sorry to interrupt, if we submitted a PDF that can be viewed? Our presentation, I only have mine on board here, but it would be helpful, a member or public.
Well, let me put it this way, anything that you would like Zuzi to put up on the website in the section about this process, send to her and we'd be happy to do that. A link, or a PDF, or, whatever you would like, that would be great. Thank you all for coming.